Leslie probably knows you're watching while.
I don't like hearing it.
Just saying.
It's a socialization for us.
You have to wave because.
Are you ready now? Emily, are you ready?
She's cleaning out her.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Eustace City Hall. This is a workshop on homelessness by the Eustace City Commission, joint with Livestreams, Lake County, and looking forward to some open and frank conversation tonight with trying to address some of our issues. We also have with us tonight Salvation Army. Chris, thank you for being here with us this evening as well. Mary, is there a form present proper notice been given?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Tonight's meeting, we're going to have some opening statements by Livestreams, then we're going to turn it over to Lake County, then we're going to let the audience speak a little bit tonight so we can hear what your thoughts are. Nothing will be decided tonight. We will take everything under advisement. We will come back into a city commission meeting, hopefully the last meeting in December, have a little bit more conversation about some steps that the city of Eustace can take in controlling a little bit of the problem that we have here in our city. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce B.E. Thompson with Livestream Behavioral Center. B.E.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to come and speak tonight. My role, Livestream's role tonight is really to talk about our program, The Open Door, and how it serves the Eustace or greater Golden Triangle area community, and to talk about some of the issues that we are aware of that exist here in Eustace. So I've actually asked my staff from The Open Door, thank you, Mary, to be here tonight to talk about specifics, the numbers that we're serving, some of the subpopulations. And in addition to that, Barbara Wheeler, Executive Director of Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, is here to talk about some of that information as well, because we are part of a larger continuum of care, and she represents the lead agency and the data that we, she manages the data that we put into the system. So I'm going to introduce our staff. Ash Wallace is our homeless supervisor. Debbie Flaherty is our homeless specialist. And then in the audience tonight is Brady Bass, who is also one of our homeless specialists. So we can go ahead and provide you with some of the data that we have available unless you want to hear from Barbara first.
Either way, whatever you think's best to do. B.E.
Barbara, do you want to lead off?
If you will pull those microphones over in front of you when you get ready to speak, they'll be able to hear on the recording better. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. So as B.E. indicated, we are the keepers of the data. We have a data system that we use to collect information regarding homeless individuals across four counties. And The Open Door, for example, is one organization that enters data into that system. We recommend or encourage any organization who are working with those that are literally homeless to participate and submit data, because obviously, we all make better decisions with good quality data. So I want to start off by sharing with you that one of the questions that we have added to our data system because of questions that have come up in the community is, have you been homeless the total time in this county? Because that has been, obviously, a question that has come up in many communities. Are these our homeless, or have they come from somewhere else? So to start off with, I want to give you a sense that this is quality data, because only 42 of the 209 people that we looked at in the data system indicated that they became homeless outside of Lake County. And the fact is, is that we have, I mean, we are asking that question consistently. So you can thank Ash and his staff for that happening, because again, we want to see data quality, so we are assuring you that they're consistently asking that question. So to give you then a little bit more, what they do then is also try to track location, so if someone's willing to tell them where they reside. So to give you an idea of numbers, when we're looking at those people that are going to The Open Door for services, we're looking at about 14% of them from Leesburg. 63% of them are from the Eustace area, based on what they're, the data they're providing. About 5% from Umatilla, 4% from Tiberias, 2 from Paisley, Mount Dora, about 7%. And then Fruitland Park and Astetula, 1%. And I can certainly provide any of that data that you want in written copy. So that at least gives you a sense of what's going on at The Open Door. Then we also, Come As You Are Ministries, which is in downtown Leesburg, they also have a center. So one of the things that I ask my data person to look at is what the data looks like there as well. And just to let you know that there's only about 10 people that are getting service from Come As You Are Ministry and duplicated at Open Door. So for the most part, those people that are going to Come As You Are Ministries are only getting services there. And again, in that particular case, 76% of the people that are going to Come As You Are Ministries are actually from Leesburg. There's 14% of the people that are going there are actually from Eustace. So it is, it tells you that people are mobile. I mean, we know that across the country. We're a mobile community. And, you know, this, the homeless, those that are homeless are a cross-section of, you know, are representative of all of our, the people that you see throughout the United States. The one other thing that, as B.E. and I were chatting, one of the things that we wanted to take a look at was, because a lot of the assumption are, these people want to remain homeless. So again, when we're having conversations with people, whether it's at Come As You Are, whether it's at Open Door, whether it's our outreach team out in the community, part of that conversation is, are you wanting housing? So then that next step is that if they're saying that they really do want housing, then we attempt to do a housing assessment. So just to give you an idea, based on our data that we're tracking, that there's about 250 people right now, or households, that we've identified as being homeless throughout Lake County. And 60% of them have indicated that they are interested in being in housing. It is not their desire to remain homeless. So again, I think that gives you kind of a sense of, kind of what's going on in our communities, that it isn't always, you know. Someone may say that they're not necessarily looking for housing, but what we find is that sometimes that actually comes from a, the fact that that's the only control that they have, is to be able to say, I want to be this way. But as we spend more time with them and work with them, then the conversation changes and says, I would really like to have housing, I just don't know how to get there. And one other thing is that we continue to hear, you know, across the country, is that, you know, how do you end homelessness? And the bottom line is, the only way that you can end homelessness is put people in housing. And, you know, we just receive such little funds through our continuum of care to put people in housing, that that is one of our challenges. And also so that you understand that we do believe in, as a continuum of care, of the housing first, that you take someone from literal homelessness and put them into housing, you do case management, and we have seen that that can be a very successful program. So that's the information that I share with you now. If you have any questions, please feel free to let me know.
Just a clarification, the ones out of 250, how many do you say, what percentage looking for housing? I've forgotten.
At least 60% of them have actually had a housing assessment and are waiting on our list for our funds to become available for, to get housed.
Thank you.
So I think we've listened to some percentages, Barbara's provided us with some information, but I'd like for Ash and Debbie to talk real numbers, the numbers that we currently have enrolled in services at The Open Door, how many we've served in the past 12 months, and what our daily census looks like.
Sure. Excuse me a little bit, I'm a little under the weather, so.
Don't call.
I'm going to do my best to. Well, yeah, Barbara did a great job of kind of explaining where we're at, 209 currently active in our program. And for anyone who doesn't know, what we are is a drop-in center or day shelter. We try to provide almost everything that an emergency shelter could, except for the overnight accommodations, connecting them with resources, meeting their basic needs, shower, food, laundry, things like that. And we are currently, on average per day, seeing 50 different individuals, which is quite a large upward trend of what we're seeing towards the beginning of the year. And that's for arguably a couple of different reasons, but we did have, which is notable, a staff change. So some of those people are consumers who are coming to The Open Door, aren't necessarily new homeless, whereas towards the beginning of the year, we were seeing maybe 25 people a day, and now we're seeing 50, 60 a day. So it's not necessarily 40 new homeless people, it's people who used to come to The Open Door are now coming back, some of them. Some of them are new. But that's just something to kind of keep in perspective, it's not necessarily this huge influx, it's people we've seen before. And as far as services that we're providing, we track everything through our database, CLARITY, that we use through Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition. So far this month, we've just, this month of November, seen, served, I'm sorry, done over 2,000 services, and since the beginning of the year, over 18,000 services. So we track at intake, when a new consumer comes in, put that into the system, anything they can give to us, their demographic information, information about time they've been homeless, where they've been homeless, like Barbara mentioned, and then anything, their disabilities, benefits they receive, so that we can connect them with services in the community. And then the services every day that they receive, we track those numbers as well, so that's how we're able to see what we're doing. Yeah, that's The Open Door.
Good question, Ash. Of the clients that you see, do you, when you interview them, do you ask them where are they staying, what, how are you, where are you sheltering? Do you track that?
Sure. And like Barbara mentioned, we do have a location tab when we do an enrollment. Sometimes some of our consumers aren't as forthcoming about letting us know that, it's just being burned in the past by police raiding, or whoever coming into their camp making them move along. If they tell us, we log it for sure, which is how she was able to get the 63% from Eustace. So yes, we do track that if they're willing to give us that information.
Well, I just want to clarify, the number you said, 18,000, I think you said?
Yes.
Okay, that's duplicated services, so how many individuals is that?
Out of the 209 active consumers.
So I don't want people to be thinking there is such an influx.
No, no, no.
The other question is, okay, I'm sorry. The other question is, when people are coming back, so what happened to those folks? Where did they go in the meantime?
Before they re-. Some of them are, you know, moving transient. B.E., do you have something to say?
I just want, it might be restrictive policies from The Open Door, or someone?
No, it's not. One of the things that I did want to clarify, Commissioner Morin, is that we've had 430 unduplicated clients in the past 12 months, so that 18,000 services represents 430 individuals, not 208. There's 208 currently enrolled in services at The Open Door.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any way of knowing, I know that many times the homeless are sometimes mentally ill, do you have any knowledge of how many of those clients might need that kind of service?
Understand that The Open Door only uses CLARITY, which is the homeless management information system, as a database, and is a separate entity, if you will, from Livestream Behavioral Center, in the sense that they don't have access to the medical health records there. So it would be self-declaration only. But we do have that data reported into the HMIS system. And I think we discussed that earlier, Ash, do you want to talk about that?
Right. From what they self-report at intake, it's about 39% reporting that they have a mental health concern or issue that they're dealing with. And that's, again, just based on their self-reporting, so only if they want to disclose that to us would we know.
How do you handle clients that you know may be under the influence of drugs or actively using drugs? Do you screen? Do you restrict? How do you address that?
Sure. So that's another thing where, if they're forthcoming with us, and we ask that question at intake too, substance use history. Of course, on our property, zero tolerance, they can't use it, they will be trespassed from our property, no exception there. But once again, if they're telling us, coming to us with an issue, we're more than happy to connect them to some of Livestream's other services that we can, and of course, no use with us on our program.
Thank you. Any other questions of Ash?
One of the things that I did want to mention too, and we don't collect this particular data at The Open Door, but I'm, I follow the Lake County Sheriff's Office arrest reports. And when I see someone that's coded homeless, it makes me become curious about what their history is. And for example, last week, I saw someone who is a former consumer of services at The Open Door, had been rearrested. And so I went through his history, and he had 17 arrests, but each arrest, I was able to click on and find out what the charges were and that sort of thing. And I find that information to be useful, but what I also found was, he had five prior physical addresses in Eustace. So this is someone that's been in Eustace for almost 20 years. And so I think, you know, I wish I had a way of going into the sheriff's office database, and I'm sure that they do, and they're extremely cooperative. If we were to ask them for that information, they could probably provide it for us on larger terms. But the one thing that I saw was that we keep talking about people bringing the homeless or the homeless just landing here, and that they're transient by nature, and there is a lot of that. But there are some that are long-term, if not lifelong, residents of Eustace as well, or Lake County.
I have another question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you serve just individuals or families?
Talking about Open Door.
Yeah, Open Door, when they come in.
If they come in as a family unit, we absolutely will serve an intact family, yes. I will tell you that we don't get that very often, primarily because of the fear of being reported to DCF.
One of the things that we do, again, I mean, we work together as a community on these services, so part of what takes place is, when they're doing an intake, if someone is interested in housing, then they notify our office. We then have a staff person goes out at least once a month and spends the entire day at The Open Door doing housing assessments. So we are trying to, you know, identify as many of the people that want housing, do those assessments, and try to figure out what's going on in their lives. Unfortunately, it, the, you know, the waiting list for housing, you know, like everything else is long, but at the same time, we all work together to try to figure out if there's other ways that we can connect them to services, to keep them safe, and to even, you know, encourage them to self-house, which happens more than you would actually think, that there's a lot of people that are out there that are self-housing, that you, you know, we tend to talk about those that remain homeless, but there's a lot of people that find ways. And part of that is being able to get services, like at The Open Door, to be able to take showers, and to be able to then go out and get jobs, where if you're just living in the woods and you're not able to clean yourself, it becomes very, much more difficult to then, you know, present yourself to be able to get a job.
Trends in service, what's your pattern been over the last 12 to 18 years? Increase, decrease?
At The Open Door, it's increased by 100% since January. We were averaging about 25 a day, and now we're seeing 55 to 60 a day.
Okay.
I just want to make one note. I don't know if you all have taken a look at some of the data that the Florida Chamber put together, but part of what we have learned is that there are three counties that are having the most increase in, or continue to have, and they anticipate that it's going to continue in that way, to have an increase in the number of people moving to those areas. Orange County is one of those. And so there is no doubt, I mean, and that's part of what the Florida Chamber is saying, is that all of the communities, so it's Hillsborough, Miami-Dade, and Orange County. So all of the surrounding counties, unfortunately, then are going to feel the impact of that continued growth in that area. And that's one of the things that I think that Lake County has to continue to look at, that that's going to continue to be an impact on Lake County, because, you know, whether we're talking about housing, or, you know, services, or whatever it is, there's going to be that overflow. So when we talk about, you know, Hernando and Citrus feeling that overflow from Hillsborough County, we're definitely, you know, going to feel that in Lake County.
Karen?
Just to touch on something that Rhonda asked about the increase, I just wanted to qualify that a little bit. Nash touched on it a bit earlier. A lot of the increase that we're seeing now that we weren't seeing at the beginning of the year, are people that we've served in the past, who for whatever reason stopped coming to The Open Door. We've had a staff change at The Open Door, and now we're seeing a lot of those individuals come again. There are new people, without a doubt, but some of those people were historically clients at The Open Door and are now coming back.
That's exactly what I was trying to get to, because I don't want us to think that that's been an increase of 100%, just in the last six, eight months or so, there were people before. And sometimes what happens is, in that world of services for homelessness, there are times where people don't abide by the rules, and they're not allowed to come back. And that's an issue we're going to have here in Eustace too. So those are the folks, those, probably those 100% of those, or maybe 75% of those that already probably were not allowed to come back, so. So numbers have not dramatically increased, but I'm sorry.
I think what has started this conversation, especially today, is, maybe it's not the numbers, it's that we're seeing the results of homelessness so much more in Eustace and in Leesburg. It's not, you know, you never saw people sleeping in doorways, or sleeping on the boardwalk, or the lake walk. But now it's become so very evident, and the late cleanup, the number of hypodermics that are down there. And I think our small town is very concerned about the presence at this point. And it's, and for clarity, I do sit on the advisory board of The Open Door, and while there's a passion to help, I also have a passion for my community. So we have to find a way to channel, either find a way to get people to the point where they can be self-sufficient, which is not an overnight thing. I mean, we all know that, it's not a 30-day, 60-day, 90-day thing. But how do we, how do we as a community, help individuals who want to succeed, want to do better, become that point? And maybe that's what I'm asking. What is needed? I mean, you've got showers, forgive me, Ann, part of me says we need to stop feeding at The Open Door, because that becomes something that they depend on, and there's other places for food pantries, and maybe, and I'm just talking out loud, guys, so it's trying to think of something that will solve our situation, solve the, solve the person that's laying at City Hall on the stairway with a hypodermic in his arm, and the employee's walking up. I mean, we have to do something. And that's, I think everybody says that, we have to do something. Well, something has to, we have to figure that part out.
You know, like you, Commissioner LaHoop, I'm born and raised in Eustace. I was born here, I'll die here. Eustace is my community, and it's very important to me. The services at The Open Door are very important to me as well. And so we want to be as involved in this conversation as possible to make the best decisions for Eustace. You know, we set The Open Door up where it would serve a, not a full breakfast, but a snack type in the morning, and then a lunch meal. It's not a food pantry. We don't provide carryout food unless we have just a huge surplus of stuff, and there happens to be cold nights coming, and they may not seek food. We might package a few things, but it's on a very small level. It's hard to predict, you know, how much food service is going out a day, but I will tell you that if we're not preparing and serving the food at The Open Door, there's church, local churches, who are wonderful partners of The Open Door, but who also serve certain days of the week, and the clients from The Open Door go to those locations for those meals. So if they're not eating at The Open Door, they're going to eat somewhere locally.
So for, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, you know, like for the, for the people who are homeless, who are actively panhandling, actively walking up to residents, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but there has to be some way, I mean, it becomes a police department issue, but they have things to do too. How do we, how do we combine those regulating, yet still providing a service for people?
I think that a broader conversation with the public safety departments in Eustace probably would address some of those issues, because I personally don't know how many of the panhandlers that are being engaged by the Eustace Police Department are actually clients of The Open Door. Some of them may not be. Some of them may formerly have been clients of The Open Door, and they're either trespassed from The Open Door, or no longer getting services from The Open Door, because they don't agree with the policies or procedures that we adhere to at The Open Door. You know, I thought that this would be part of the conversation tonight, so I was trying to look on a state and national level what the percentage is. It's really not even fair to address it, because if I tell you it's 7%, you're going to say, no way. That's, you know, I know it's bigger than that, and it may be, but the data that I looked at last night said 7%. That's a national figure. I would love to have a conversation with Chief Calhoun, or some of the folks from the Police Department, find out if they are some of the active clients at The Open Door, and try and have that dialogue on a greater level, to see how we can work together to make sure that they're not doing that. You know, my office is in downtown Leesburg, so I see it there.
Oh, yes.
Instead of in Eustace. But I know exactly what you're talking about, and I know it's a concern for our downtown retailers, as well as those who patronize our downtown retailers.
I think this is a perfect time to segue over to the county. Our Chair of the Lake County.
May I ask one more question?
Real quick, if you would.
Just real quick. I want to know about the success stories. Do you have numbers as to how many people became employed through the resources that they received? How many actually were housed, found housing as a result? You know, some success stories?
We do, and I don't know that Ash has prepared or brought any of those stories with you tonight. I mean, you know, some of the stories we could tell you will, you know, leave us all crying by the time we walk out of here. There are success stories. But I will tell you too, that we've also experienced families that we've put into permanent housing, that, you know, after a six-month period, weren't successful, but for six months, they were. And if we had had more long-term assistance to provide those families, they probably would have stayed permanently housed for a longer period of time. You know, we had this discussion, I think, with Barbara yesterday, where a car repair bill could be the cause of a family becoming homeless, and then it takes years to get out of that cycle. You know, what's more important? A car, so you have transportation to work, or a roof over your head? You know, some. Some people choose the car because they live in the car. Some people choose to buy a pair of steel-toed boots because they, it is a requirement of their job, and that small investment throws their monthly finances completely off, and then they get a month behind in rent. And there's a very small percentage that fit in this particular case, but some people pay their rent every single month, and they don't realize that the landlord isn't paying the mortgage on the property that they live in until the sheriff's office shows up one day and evicts them from the property, because it's now a bank-owned property. And the time that it takes for a family like that to save enough to get back into permanent housing is just unbelievable at times.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. With us tonight is the Chair of the Lake County Commission, Leslie Campione, and I think it's kind of appropriate for her to be here this evening. I know that they have had a workshop at the county level on the homeless situation here in Lake County. And realizing, here as a city, this is bigger than us, and I think Leslie realizes also it's bigger than probably what the county can handle on its own, and it's going to take us all kind of united to work together to probably fix our challenges. So, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie for a little bit. If you'd like to introduce your staff that's with you this evening as well. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you so much for asking us to be here and including us. The County Manager is with us tonight, Jeff Cole, and also our Deputy County Manager, Ron Russo.
Thank you.
And, you know, the situation that you're talking about, your Eustis experience, is not unique just to Eustis, you know that. And as Bee noted, Leesburg has actually been dealing with this probably longer than any other city in Lake County, and Claremont has some very similar situations. Just today, I learned, and I had heard some of it, but I didn't realize how prevalent it was, in the Sorento area, we have a pretty big situation there as well, as far as, you know, people living in the woods, and then maybe, and I didn't have a chance to talk to the County Manager about this, but apparently they're ending up at the Eastlake Library oftentimes, because there is Wi-Fi there, and there are outlets, and so, they may come to charge their phones, or, you know, be able to get on the Internet. So, and I wish that I could say, "Hey, I'm from the county, and we've got it all figured out."
We expected that.
But, you know, we've been, we've been talking about this for quite some time. Denise Burry is here tonight, and Denise, you know, a couple of years ago, came to the County Commission and talked to us about the particular mission that she was working on, and that was unaccompanied youth that were homeless, essentially. And she was working, navigating the system, trying to find them housing, which is kind of interesting when you think about that, on a small scale, that's basically, you know, the mid-Florida Homeless Coalition and the HUD mission is housing first. If we can just navigate the system and get people into housing, and then, depending on what their situation is, whether it's mental health, substance abuse, is it just inability to handle finances, hold a job, or whatever it was that brought them to that place, if we could wrap them with social services and help them transition into being able to be in housing full-time? And that's a lot of what Denise is doing, is helping young people get their feet on the ground and navigate through these things. But oftentimes, it's just an issue of not being able to find affordable housing, not being able to find housing that, you know, with, that is within reach, that's safe. And so, that is a big part of the equation. But some of the other issues that you've brought up tonight about law enforcement, the law enforcement side, you know, when I heard the number of sixty percent say that they would choose housing, and that's very consistent with a recent survey that was done in the Leesburg-Frutland Park area, where they actually went out and talked to people on the ground here in Lake County, and on one day, and they asked them, and the numbers are pretty consistent. So, if we have sixty percent that say, "If we could help connect them to housing, connect them to social services, help them break the cycle," so to speak, that they would no longer be out there living on the streets, then we've got forty percent that are still going to be there. And I think we have to accept going into this. We're not going to solve the whole problem, we all know that, but it gives us sort of a realistic number to look at. We're going to continue to have people sleeping in doorways, you know, down at the lake walk. But I guess the question, you know, I keep asking is, are we doing something that's making it worse? Or are we not doing something, you know, that could be making it better? And, you know, the open door is, you know, sort of raised this question of, are we accommodating? Are we enabling?
Enabling.
You know? And whenever you think about, you know, the food pantries, or the soup kitchens, you know, you wonder, okay, if it wasn't so easy to, you know, easy to live on the streets, then would people really try hard not to be living on the streets? And it just seems that common sense tells you that if you can't get somebody literally off the street and with a roof over their head, how are you ever going to get them to a place where they can get their hands around, you know, being, you know, in housing full-time, having a job, sort of breaking that cycle? And that's the thing that we're missing in Lake County that we just don't have, and that is an overnight place, where if it's bad luck, bad circumstances, just a one-time thing that happened, that put them in a situation where they need someplace overnight as they try to get their life together, or if it's a situation where they're literally, you know, in a cycle, they're, the inertia is holding them back from trying to make a change, if we just had this overnight place where we could say, "Hey, if we get you there, can we triage you and find out what's going on in your life, and where we might be able to plug you into services?" And that's where, you know, this question or debate came up in Lake County, should we have an overnight shelter? And how would we pay for it? How would it look like? What would it look like? Would the county actually run the shelter? Should each city have their own? Should each region have their own? And so, we kind of stepped up, you know, as the overarching sort of county government, say, "Okay, what if we were the lead agency that tried to bring everybody together? And we got our not-for-profits together, our churches, and any folks that are interested, and just get us all together and figure out, you know, could we pull this off? Could we do it?" And number one, would it, could we make the situation better? We don't want to make it worse. We don't want to enable. And so, the Salvation Army stepped up, and they've done this before, they've done it in other places, they've had success in other locations. And so, they stepped up, and their board said, "We're interested in taking this on, but we can't fund the ongoing operating cost. We can do the management of it, we can use templates that we've used other places, we can tailor it to what Lake County needs and what each city needs, but we can't, we can't fund it." But they did offer to help raise the money, the bricks and the mortar, to actually get something in place, but not to do the ongoing operating part of it. So, the County Commission has been looking at, you know, what those numbers would look like, based on what Lieutenant Chris has presented. And we are, the next step that we took was, what we essentially decided we wanted to have a county-wide meeting, bring all the cities together, bring public safety in, just get everybody together, and look at these numbers, talk about what the shelter, the components we should have in the shelter, and just really all be in it together on a community basis. We, the County Commission, on December 3rd, we are looking at, we're basically formulating that agenda, and then we're reaching out, from there, we'll reach out to the cities and try to come up with a date. So, I'm thinking it will probably be January, maybe February at the latest, depending on everyone's schedules. But we're going to shoot, I believe, for January to have that community-wide meeting. We would probably do it. It may need to be at Lake Receptions, it might be at the Ag Center, wherever we can, you know, have enough space to accommodate and really have a good, you know, area to work within. So, we're reaching out to you all to invite you to be part of that discussion. Now, the dollar side of it, one of the things that came up was, maybe we should prorate this. Maybe each city would chip in per population. Well, some cities say, "Well, we don't really have a problem. You know, it's the three big cities that really have the problem, let them do it." Other people said, "Well, the county, it's county government, you know, why don't we just have the county government do it?" You know, so we're not quite sure how we would, how we'd go about that, doing that. I've got a couple of ideas that I'd like to propose to our board about how we might be able to do it, where it's, you've got a county-wide funding component, and then for each city that wants to participate, to be an active participant, that maybe we would have some sort of formula there. But all of this is open to discussion, and I'm completely open-minded about it, because my goal is to get us, get us there, but do it in a way that's effective. And if we find out what we try to do isn't working, then we step back and we will redesign it. But I want to, I want to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about kind of their, the Salvation Army's vision, and why thus far, based on what they've told us, the County Commission has been very supportive of wanting to work with the Salvation Army. Because as you will hear, it's not just a place to come and sleep. What they're proposing is the type of system where you would have to play by the rules, and you would be looking to get your feet on the ground and get into transitional housing, and then into permanent housing. So, Chris, if you'd like to take it from here and talk about kind of what Salvation Army's, Lake and Sumter County Salvation Army's vision is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be part of this discussion. I'm Lieutenant Chris DeBoerwitz, and along with my wife, Elise, we oversee the work for the Salvation Army for Lake and Sumter County. Since we arrived in June, we've been trying to learn the needs of our communities, to the best of our ability. Much of my time the last few months has been spent trying to get an accurate picture of the issue of homelessness, so trying to ask more questions than make statements, to be honest. I think it's fair to say that right now, we are aggressively researching and trying to dialogue with as many people as possible as to what the best way forward is going to be. In terms of combating homelessness, historically, the Salvation Army for Lake and Sumter County has been more on the preventative side, diversion, case management, utility assistance, rent, water, stuff like that. So, that's kind of when the piece of the puzzle that we've been involved in over the last couple decades. But about a year ago, one of our advisory board members, who happens to be Sheriff Peyton Grinnell, he asked if we would be willing to research the possibility of emergency shelter. So, that's sort of where the conversation started taking off. So, we hired a consulting group, which is standard Salvation Army policy, and they got to work. Their number-one task was to identify the primary unmet needs for Lake and Sumter County. And as you guessed, the number one, one of, the number-one need was homelessness, and they had various, you know, points to that as well. And then, along with that, as I'm sure we all know, that the other need is affordable housing. Our research group identified that, especially for seniors. That was, that was the other, other component. And since then, we've continued research in the possibility, as well as the feasibility of building and operating some type of emergency facility. We told the county that we'd be willing to administrate and run the program, but we would need county and surrounding cities to financially commit to such a project. Commissioner Campione asked us if we'd be willing to prepare a budget, so that we could get a better idea of what it would take to run a type of program. And so, working with our divisional headquarters, we produce an annual working budget for a fifty-bed shelter that would include intensive case management. The cost for that would be just under 1.2 million dollars a year. It's important to note, however, that fifty beds is not a magic number, it was simply a starting point to be, to start costing out realistic numbers. But what we do know for sure, though, is that if we decide to move in the direction of a residential facility, is that, at least from our standpoint, I know that our COC Director and the folks will agree, that we want to have the smallest footprint possible. In terms, in terms of shelter specifics, what the Salvation Army is willing to do is we'd be willing to oversee the construction of a fifty-bed emergency shelter that would be designed to expand or contract based on population, distribution, and demand. We'd manage the shelter, we would provide intensive case management for the length of time a person is in the shelter, as well as when they move beyond. We would provide quarterly performance results to stakeholders, and more importantly, we would link clients to other system-of-care providers, as well as offer a place for agencies, organizations to be able to meet with clients in the shelter. Populations that we would be geared toward serving would be single men, single women, as well as families. If we, as a county, and I'm going to say, and I appreciate Commissioner Campione for saying "counties," because our jurisdiction is Lake and Sumter as well, and so that's kind of, you know, piggybacked in there, if you will. If we decide to go in the direction of shelter, we want to create a facility that would be completely flexible, so that we could ideally meet the needs as they evolve over time, as they grow, and we would be prepared, you know, ahead of the curve in the future. For example, assuming that we move forward, ideally homelessness will be reduced over time, and so the needs will continue to change. And say, for example, hypothetically, a fifty-bed shelter could be transitioned into supportive housing units, or whatever we as a continuum of care deem necessary, what would be the best fit? But the big plan would be to create a facility that would be adaptable and flexible. With all that kind of being said, as Commissioner alluded to, the way that we see moving forward, if we go this route, the two main things would be, one would be trying to figure out the funding as well. We would need counties and citywide investment to the project. And for, from our perspective, in terms of an operational side, administrating, the type of investment that we're looking at is like a ten-year contract, a ten-year agreement, a ten-year commitment to such a facility. The other thing would be, so that would be the first one, is obviously funding. The second one would be trying to articulate and define the system of care, in terms of where and how the shelter fits into the grand scheme. Obviously, the shelter would just be a front door to the system of care, but we would have to have everything else in place to move someone from our front door to their own front door. And all that's got to be well figured out before, before we start putting, putting, putting people in there. I mean, ideally, we are admitting people into, we would, you know, admit people, allow people to enter into such a facility, that we have a clearly defined path of where they're going, from point A, point B, point C, and D, and so forth. But what I'm suggesting is that we as a community, we all, I think we would all agree that we need to address homelessness on some, on various levels, but what we as a community need to decide is if we want shelter to be part of the equation or not. I understand that there's various philosophies and approaches to combating it, and I know, Barbara and I, we've had some great discussions, and, but we as a county, the cities, we need to say, if, is this going to be part of our line of attack? Because the goal is to not build a shelter. The goal is to reduce homelessness over time. And so, do we want, are we agreeing that a shelter is going to be the best way to do that? I think whether we answer yes or no to that, there are going to be pros and cons. Obviously, if the answer's no, well, we're still left with trying to figure out what we're doing with people in the interim. I think there's a lot of benefits in having what we would call in Salvation Army lingo, a center of hope, a place of bringing people in, introducing them, providing just very basic, simple, simple needs, and having, you know, amazing staff that we can begin getting the ball rolling, and give them a place in, while we're doing the wraparound services, case management, all of, all of that. Right now, what my organization is doing, what the Salvation Army is doing, whether the shelter becomes a reality or not, is that we're just trying to align ourselves with best practices. I appreciate you mentioning about not enabling, right? Not, that's something that we're, right now, we're, I'm calling up fresh in our current philosophy of service within our own organization, in terms of what is the best way to serve our clients, and how to not hurt them, right? We don't want to enable people, we don't want to be part of the problem. And so, we're kind, we're doing that currently, like I said, with or without, with or without the shelter. I'll say this, though, I know, I know I'm the, I'm the new guy here, but, and I know the county has been having these conversations, from what I understand, a long time, and when I'm going around talking to people, their first reaction is, "We need to stop talking. Time to do something, time to do something." And I say, "Well, I understand that, but I'm new, and I got to, I kind of figure out if the Salvation Army, this is a huge commitment if we go this way, this is a huge undertaking, this is a huge liability for the Salvation Army." You know, we want to know what, where everyone's head is at. But I will say this, since I've been here the last couple of months, I've been encouraged by seeing the sense of collaboration. I've been encouraged by the county and our city managers that have been reaching out, they want to have the conversation. I've been encouraged, been working with Barb and the COC- They want to have the conversation. I've been encouraged, been working with, with Barb and, and the COC. We've got some cool things set up for the beginning of the year. And so, I, I am encouraged by the direction that, that, that we're moving in. And I, I do feel like a good, a good support from, from, from residents. I know we've got, we've got local residents showing up at our, our facility. They're trying to write us checks right now. And, and you know, and we said, whoa, whoa, we're not, we're not, we're not there yet. But we do have people that we've come to be part of our team and they're offering their expertise. They're offering suggestions. They're offering input. And so, that's just really the stage that we're at right, right now. So I kind of conclude with saying, I know, I know we still have a lot, a lot of work to do, but I, I do appreciate the, you know, the invitation to be here today and the Salvation Army. We just want to be part of the solution. We, we can't, can't do it by ourselves. We're just one little tiny piece of, of the puzzle. And so, that's kind of where we're at right now.
So just to add a little bit about where we're at from the county standpoint, we're working on a draft operating agreement so that when we meet with the cities, we can talk specifics. We can talk about, you know, what it would look like and, and essentially, how do we define success? And how do we build benchmarks into that agreement so that if we do make, say, a 10-year commitment, how do we have assurances that the tax dollars that we'd be putting into this would be used in, in, in a way that, for example, if we feel that we're not, we're not getting the return on that investment, how, how would we make those changes in order to modify the approach to, to get that return on investment? To, to give a little context, if someone is loitering where they're not supposed to be or they're trespassed and then they go back, and then law enforcement can intervene and take them to the jail, the cost alone per night is, you know, 60, $70 a night. That's just the jail cost alone. Add on, you know, the law enforcement part of it, and you're probably looking at $100 a day of housing somebody. And that's to put them in jail. And we know what happens if they go to jail for a couple nights or however long, and then they're back on the street. That's not going to solve the problem, but we're going to spend taxpayer money putting them in jail. So, at some point, you have to start doing the math and think, okay, wouldn't we be better off if, in fact, we could help 60%, if it is truly 60% that want to help themselves? If we're able to actually accommodate that, wouldn't we ultimately save, save dollars as a community? The other part of this, we talk about businesses and how it affects businesses, businesses. And I don't think you can really put a price tag on that. I don't know how you really calculate how it affects your local businesses when, you know, they're trying to serve their patrons and you have people sleeping, you know, outside their front doors. It, it can bring a community down really fast. We've watched the pictures on national television, you know, and we've seen those communities that essentially have accommodated homelessness by saying, we're going to kind of hands-off approach. It's, we're not going to make it, you know, illegal to not have a place to live. So we're not going to do anything. We're going to accommodate you. And I don't think that any community in Lake County wants to see us become that. So, you know, taking action seems to be the thing that we need to do. We just have to make sure that we, we build into this program safeguards so that if we find out what the action we're taking is not working, that we can regroup and modify the approach. And Chris, could, if you could just speak to the question that has come up. Two folks have asked, you know, if we're going to use taxpayer dollars to, to actually contract with Salvation Army to, to help us with services, how do we approach the, the faith-based act, aspect of, of your organization? If you, I know you've talked about the four and other places that we've been. Sort of what, what your, what, what Salvation Army's feelings are on, on that.
Yeah. So, I mean, we make, we make no apology. The, the mission of the Salvation Army is to preach the gospel of Jesus Christ and meet human needs in His name without discrimination. And I can tell you that for Salvation Army's been in America since the late 1890s. Moving into the, you know, the 20th century, Salvation Army has, has received state, local, federal funds to, to perpetuate our mission. And so, it hasn't been a problem for, for a long ti- for, for as long as, as long as I, I know. Of course, I understand people are not committing their taxpayer money so that we can proselytize to every single person. However, for us, we, you know, for me, I, I, I foresee our faith lived out best by enabling a family to become sustainable, dependable, and sealing in them, increasing the quality of life, you know, giving them the quality of hope. And so, for us, that's the, that's the way that we've always, always gone about, gone about it. And then when we enter into residential facilities, we never, you know, we don't, we don't mandate people to do this or to do that. You know, I have particular very feelings about, about people doing that type of thing. But, but the Salvation Army, you know, we don't, we don't do that for, for many of our, many of our, our programs. And so, I mean, for me, and I, I don't know, I'd be interested to engage in that conversation with anyone, but it doesn't really...
And then that's the answer that I've gotten before is that, because people have asked me, you know, how does that fit in? And essentially, it is that, that there won't be proselytizing from the standpoint of a residential or crisis center. The, their mission is being fulfilled by helping people actually get on their feet and hopefully turn their lives around and become sustainable. You know, from, so I, I think that, that satisfied me to know that it would be appropriate for us to contract with Salvation Army if they're, if they're, you know, willing to take this on. And, and I think too, and I know you said it before, but just to emphasize, that it would be in partnership with, for example, Livestream, with the Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, with all of the other organizations that are out there, whether they're faith-based or they're not-for-profits that are doing things already. Some of them are doing transitional housing. And so, that, that's that next step, but we just don't have that, we just don't have that overnight temporary type housing while we try to plug them in to some of those programs that are available for transitional housing. So that's where we're at.
When, when you say an emergency shelter, how long would someone be able to stay?
Well, ideally, and these are things that we've got to, we've got to work out prior to, to building, but we'll get someone through the door and house as, as soon as, as soon as possible. But I know something that you'll, you'll hear, you know, often, often said, which is, shelter than what? Shelter than what? Which is a very real, real, it's an important question. What are we as a community providing? Something that, something that we've talked about and we've, we've kind of been around and, and spoke to a lot of people. We made a presentation to, I think, almost every city manager for Lake and Sum- Sumter County. And we've talked about what we're seeing effective in, in terms of housing in other, other communities are, are cities and counties taking a look at their property inventory and donating them to other, other agencies and nonprofits and having them, you know, rehab them up and, and donate them and, and so forth. And so, the housing piece is, is very important because obviously, they can't stay in a shelter for, for forever. And, and so, that's, that's what I mean by, those are all things that have to be worked out.
But Chris, wasn't it 30 days or 60 days? When y'all made your presentation to the, our board, I was thinking that the, there was a timeframe that you, you would set for the shelter itself.
Yeah. I mean, ideally, you, you would have a, like, you would have a, you'd have a goal, say, save 90 days to get, to get someone housed. And, and in the process, you're giving them very clear, concise resources, but also guidelines in terms of like, okay, you're going to go meet with so-and-so and you're going to talk to this. You know, and, I mean, obviously, if they're combatant and they're just, you know, refusing, then there's not much we, we, and that's kind of different. But, um, yeah, those, those are all, all things that we still have to work out.
I guess, maybe I have time to sc- but when we were talking about this facility, I expected, we have, I think they were saying it was like 209 people and they were, and open door, they were servicing. So, that means that 159 people would still be out there. I guess I was thinking maybe a more grandiose kind of facility that would, but 50 beds means that you're going to have to put a time limit on people. You're going to, you're going to be rolling them over. So, if they, if they make it or don't make it, then what happens to them after? And how long can you sustain them? How long can you provide the resources that they might need? Some are easier or harder than others. And so, I, I guess I'm thinking with 50 beds, it sounds doable, but there's still a lot more out there. And how quickly are you going to roll them over? And if so, then how long will it be that you can provide services? Or do you just let them go? If they do not succeed, then they just go back out? Is that what happens?
Well, I mean, I, I would say to answer your question, those are still things that we as a continuum of care still need to, to, to work out in terms of the housing and all those wraparound services. For instance, connecting someone to, to mental health or, or job, you know, all, all that, those types of things. And so, yeah, those are things that we still have to work out.
Well, you said you would do, work with families and with individuals. So, how, what, do you have a percentage of how many with families you could accommodate or individuals? Is there a breakdown?
I would say the best way to answer that question would be a percentage that we as a community decide on. With Barbara being keeper of the data, those are, those are things that we would still have to work out in terms of what, what is our homelessness situation for, 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 for Lake, for Lake County? And again, I was going to say Sumter. But it's, you know, and I've talked about this, there's, there's not a magic number. I mean, the, the more beds you, you have, then people will come, you know, and so... And so, it's, it's, like I said, you know, there's pros and cons to both way, both ways that we go about combating homelessness. And if we do a residential facility, you know, those are things that we still have to take into account. But trying to have the most minimal footprint possible.
I guess the question in concern is if you have 50 beds and you have 70 people trying to fill them, what do the 20 people do while they're waiting for their bed to open?
What they're doing now?
And I think that's, that's why, I'm so thrilled to hear you. I've never really heard you speak about your sense of, well, how this would go, but you're making a lot of sense to me. As all of you probably know, I was a DCF director and I've done all this for many, many years. And it's, and I also, for full disclosure, sit on the, as a chair of the governing council for the continuum of care through the Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, which serves four counties, less than $1 million trying to do all that stuff. So, I, I think he's so right. He's hedging on this and I, I kind of like the fact that he's, I think we should talk some more. I think there's some things that Barbara has from Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition that will open your eyes about the statistics. Take a look at all the questions that we ask about all those folks that come for services. And what is the biggest problem we have? We don't have enough money to provide those services. So those folks are going to keep coming through the homeless shelter. You're never going to get the homeless shelter to be able to be as active as you think, probably providing emergency shelter, but not to provide those wraparound services. I was thinking about Denise too, from the, one of her issues was foster care. As kids come out of foster care, there was a time when we used to take care of those children through independent living. I'm not so sure it's as strong a program as it used to be. But as, I hate to tell you guys, but as the state legislature takes away that kind of money, it makes it more difficult for those kids to find places to live. So we created that. And then when we take away the William Sadowski funds of the state legislature, we take that away so we don't have affordable housing. We take from the national level. We take another large chunk of money that's allocated to, how many homeless coalitions we have in the state?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. And you find yourself again, you know, up against a wall because all of a sudden, it becomes a local issue. It becomes your issue. Well, bottom line is, any emergency shelter, and I understand it's great for folks to have that ability to be able to stay in a, a warm place overnight, but the bottom line is, it's really not going to help that much in a situation here in Ussus. It certainly won't. There may be some who will be selected to go to the, the, the emergency shelter, but you're still going to have the problem on a daily basis because they have to get out. I don't think they stay in the shelter during the day, so they have to come back out and they'll be on the streets again. So I think from our perspective, I would like to address those issues they're facing right away, right here in Ussus. What are they facing? Well, their health, mental health issues that we all talked about, B.E. knows about too, the drug issues, all of those things. If we could fund some money, or find some money, be able to fund those kind of services to get them out of that position. Because once they get to emergency shelter, the likelihood of them finding some sort of permanent housing in the future is nil. Unless you're a family who has subsidized, who've been subsidized by some program. But we don't even have enough money to do that from the homeless coalition, from the continuum of care. So we're in a quandary. And I, so, I feel so bad because I really thought I was done. I thought I'd retired from all this. When they talked about in 2000 that we're going to do, end homelessness in 10 years. Remember that? Remember that? They said we're going to do that nationally. That didn't happen, obviously, because that's going to continue. All the retailers in this, in this city commission are not going to feel there's going to be a change, even if you do have an emergency shelter. I'm not suggesting I'm against it, but I'm suggesting that there's got to be some more discussion. Let's look at the numbers. Is, is, are there some ways that we can define those numbers? And they're the, the consistent ones. The ones that are here all the time, same place, carrying the same amount of baggage all day long through the city. How can we get to them and help them move on? And, and I think that's the thing we need to be able to do. So before we get to the emergency shelter, I would love to hear more about what the actual numbers are in our, in our city and, and try to work with that and see, how does it make sense for us as taxpayers to assist those folks to get through? And, and the other thing is even the open door, it's, it's really a lot of trust fund money and, and raising funds. It's not a lot of state or, or, I don't think it's any, there might be some federal dollars, but I think it's very limited. I don't think there is federal dollars. So we get no help. Yeah. And I think most of it is raised here. So, so we, you know, we do a pretty good job, but still, we need some help with that. I'm glad that you're hedging on that. I, I hope you understand that from my perspective, I respect that. And I know that there's a push to do the emergency shelter, but I do want to look at both of those options to make sure we're doing the right thing so that the retailers in here understand that there is an effort and it won't be the same thing just because they can't fit, you know, 70 instead of 50. So I appreciate that.
Mayor, if I could just make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
And actually, an invitation. We as Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition actually have a nationwide expert coming to our community. And so, on December 13th, E.N.D. Young, who is known throughout the nation and acting in other countries as well, talking about ending homelessness. And so, that is taking place at the Florida Department of Health in Bushnell from 9:00 to noon. And we are looking for our leaders of the community to come together to have that conversation. And I've invited Lieutenant to be there as well to, to bring the subject up about shelter and to get a feel, you know, from Ian, how he feels about shelter and how it can be, whether it's positive or negative, or, you know, how we make that work if that's, that's the direction we want to go.
I'll be attending that day as a chair.
Thank you so much. What I'd like to do now is open it to some of the folks in the audience. I know we've got some business leaders in here. I know we've got, our chief is back there, but we've also got another police officer in the audience that, if they decide to speak, I'd love to hear from them. They get to see a lot of stuff that goes on in our community that some people don't get a chance to see at times. So, Ron, I'm going to let you walk around with that microphone. If you would, limit your comments to three minutes. I know some of you restaurant owners, if you need to get back to your businesses, you'll want to speak first. But please, I'd like to hear about some of the challenges as business owners you've got and some of the things that we've got going on right here in town that we may not know about. Hey, Evan.
Hello. My name is Evan Kontarakas. Some of you might know me. My office is directly across the street. And let me just apologize upfront because I'm sure I'm going to say something that's going to offend somebody at some point. I don't have the answer to this, but I'll give you some reality of what I deal with. As I said, my office is across the street. In the last, we'll go a week. We'll just make this a quick week. At 6 o'clock in the morning, on a Saturday morning, I'm in my office. Somebody just comes right in the office. The door, I left the back door open, just walked right in, a homeless person. The next day, I had two people sleeping under my carport. The next day after that, I went to put garbage, I had flip-flops up, went to put garbage in the dumpster, stepped on vials, okay? I could give you a story. I give you one for every day of the week. I will tell you, it's getting worse and worse and worse. And I've seen this. I've been here two years now. But I will, I want to talk a little bit about, I don't have the answer to the issue, but I'm here to talk a little bit about where commerce meets homelessness, okay? Because I'm helping, I'm on the community redevelopment board. And we do, my company's a marketing firm. We've redeveloped towns all over the country. Somebody spoke about this earlier. The homeless issue is one of the closest or the fastest ways to choke a city. Really is. And that's what's happening here. We talked a lot about all the different things, but not once, well, let me just, let me back up. We have a triangle. There's three churches, because I see it out my back window. There's three churches that provide food on a daily basis. Or I think it's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I know that because I pick up the debris when they only eat a couple things and they throw the rest in my yard. So I could tell you what they serve. But then on top of that, we have our two services right here. With all the heads in this room, nobody made any suggestions. Now, this is a temporary thing. But if you want to eat burgers, where do you go? To where they serve burgers. Our services are downtown. And I, we do a wonderful job, but not once did anybody say, what about the location? I'm not saying don't provide the services. And all the redevelopments are throughout the country, whether it's Skokie, Illinois, I can give you five cities. I just got done doing a project in Pittsburgh. $400 million project, same exact thing. You can't, you can, you have to take those services... You can't, you can, you have to take those services out of the core because you're going to choke the downtown. If you choke the downtown, then you don't have a tax base. So, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating shooting, hanging, putting them in another park. We have a problem, but you can't let it be in the downtown. So, my, my thing is, have we ever thought, and this is a temporary Band-Aid, but to allow the downtown to be what it needs to be, have we ever thought of moving those services to another location? If you've got two churches, three churches, the open door and Methadone Clinic, or the clinic within five hundred yards, where's everybody going to be? I personally, with my friend who owns a restaurant right here, had a person skip out on a meal. We were just, we were actually going somewhere else, followed him, went right back, right up into the clinic. So, those stories are getting worse. We've seen people shooting heroin. It, it's, it's, I don't know what the answer is, but a temporary Band-Aid could possibly be not having all the services in this core to allow, allow you time to do what you need to do, but allow the downtown community to do what needs to do. We're talking about putting in some redevelopment and big plans for the city. Fastest way to choke that, all the research says, and the consumers that we've polled are all saying that, until we fix this problem, I'm not going to use the downtown. And that's so, we're spending money on one end to develop the downtown, but we have to solve this problem. And that, that goes without, that safety is the number one issue, and that's where it's coming from.
Thank you, Evan. Anybody else like to speak? Tilly?
Hi, Gary from Five-Eleven South grocery. Just a couple of questions. We hear that housing is what we need. What do we have now for them? Do we have anything?
No, no.
Well, they're, I mean, not for overnight housing, for homelessness. There, I mean, we have affordable housing programs, we have waiting lists. We have some state money that helps us to provide rental assistance to people while they're trying to get their feet on the ground. But those funds have been reduced significantly by the state. And even if we had the funds, then you still have to be able to find an apartment or a place you can rent that, you know, the money would actually cover. So, it's a, it's somewhat complex.
And then the other, other question I had is, when law enforcement engages these people, is there any kind of communication with outreach partners to let them know that, you know, hey, we have a possible homeless person and try to get some, try to get them some help? I know, I've, I've been doing, I've been doing a lot of reading on this and a lot of other towns have an outreach person that works for the city that actually, when they're engaged by law enforcement, will go out and say, hey, what can we do to help you get off the street?
They're doing that in Claremont, so it might be something that would be a good idea for your chief to talk with, with theirs. But they actually do have people on staff in the police department that are interventionalist. You know, and they actually try to help connect somebody that's living on the streets with some services. They try to actually make that transition.
Right.
And they're the ones that actually came to me and said, if we had a shelter, I could at least then get them into the shelter and then work with them to get plugged into the system or to the services. But you don't have any place to take them right now while you try to get them plugged in.
Right, and I understand that they're, they have a fear of law enforcement, so that's why maybe someone that's, you know, that's not connected to law enforcement, that'd be more able to, to.
We'll have to chief Broadway and see what they've got going on down in Claremont.
I'll just touch base a little bit on that.
Yeah, there's an answer.
That program is actually a grant that Livestream applied for in partnership with the Board of County Commission. County Commission is actually the fiscal manager of that grant. But Livestream and Claremont Police Department both have staff housed in the Claremont Police Department to manage that program. But it's a.
And we do have outreach workers.
It works very well. I wanted to touch too, Gary, on the fact that Section Eight housing, which is what probably we're most familiar with, there's that eight to ten year wait to get a Section Eight housing voucher in Lake County. So, you know, that's a, it's a huge challenge.
And we do fund outreach workers, right?
We, we used to fund outreach and a lot of those dollars have now been gone, have been moved to actually housing people. So, our program is moving them from homelessness to housing with what limited dollars that, that we have. We do have on staff ourselves, three outreach workers that are funded through LSF to work with those that have mental health substance abuse issues. They cover five counties. And to let you know that they, LSF, the focus is those, identifying those that are homeless that are using the Baker Act facility the most and trying to get them into housing because again, those are costing all of us as taxpayers the most money. So, that's their focus and that's what my staff is working.
And they do come out to Eustis?
Yes.
Right, and it's, LSF is Lutheran?
Services, which invests the mental health dollars.
So, there are some outreach workers available. Anytime somebody calls me, I always call her office to make sure somebody comes out. Like we talked about the bridge over Sharps Park and somebody came out. And when the folks were going to be evicted for, for, for the, the Sharps Park at one time, well, we called somebody to come out and help them to find other homes and stuff. So, there are some people doing outreach now.
So, and just to kind of put it into perspective, LSF is the managing entity of mental health and substance abuse dollars for a large portion of Florida. And they contract with Midflora Homeless Coalition, they have a PATH grant. I don't remember what the acronym stands for, but at any rate, they manage that program locally and so they have.
Three outreach.
Three outreach workers for five counties.
Thank you. Daniel, did you want to go next, sir?
Sure.
Hi, everybody, Daniel DiVonazzo. I'm a downtown property owner and local businessman. And, you know, the homeless, the poor are always going to be with us, we get that. And of course, we do have a responsibility. On an individual level, I will tell you, and I'm not, I'm not trying to make a case here, but I've helped eight young men get their GEDs and I've housed four transients. I currently have two transients sleeping outside of my properties at the, I mean, tonight. The problem is, is if we build something, they're going to come. And so, we really have to look at the core issues. And it's, it's a nationwide issue, folks, and it's education and it's parental involvement. We're, we're not going to be able to fix this because we're going to throw money at it. If we want to throw money at it, and I would just go the simplest route, and I think the county and Leslie, I think it'd be the fairest across the board, put out there a, a tax increase that is going, or some kind of program that's going to put money into a fund that you'll be able to, to have it so you can make those commitments. And it'll be across the board so that your wealthier communities, with the wealthier tax base, proportionally will pay their share versus those communities that are less, do not have, you know, the base that the other communities do. It's going to be, it's going to be a tough road for us. And, and how you do it, I mean, the fact that we've got the open door downtown. And by the way, I know some of the founding members there, I've talked with them. It, it's a beautiful program and I will tell you, every transient that I have met knows about the open door and it is used. It's very successful. Unfortunately, it's right downtown. I mean, so it's, it's, you know, you say to yourself, well, isn't that kind of, you know, a superior attitude that you don't want to see it downtown? Well, you have to understand, how are you funding that? With your tax base? So, if your core, and by the way, in Eustis, we're struggling to re-energize and build our core because what's that going to be? It'll go out from there. You know, we've looked, you can look at multiple communities where the cores just died on the vine and what happens? They're, they're moving out. We want, we're trying to rebuild that core and to try to include a transient element really doesn't work. It, it just doesn't work for us. It doesn't work for any community. So, again, I think, you know, in overview, we, we each individually have a responsibility, which I take personally. We also have a responsibility to somehow get to the core with regard to education and parental involvement. Because I'm going to tell you across the board, and nobody's brought this up. I've, I've probably given at least four, at least four, the ones I've housed, jobs. And because, you know, I have tenants, rental tenants, residential and commercial tenants, and these people are working on my properties, I have to do background searches. In every single case, questionable criminal backgrounds. And you, so, so, you know, that is an element that we have to consider. You have to think, you want to, you want to re-educate and you want to put them out. I want to tell you something. There are employers, one felony, you cannot get a job. One felony. So, now, you're, you want to provide housing for somebody, but you can't give them a job. You can't find them a job. So, how do we change that cycle? That's where, that's where our focus needs to be.
Well, and, and to add on to what Daniel's saying, put three evictions on their credit history and you can't get a, a property manager that's willing to rent to them.
Wait for the mic, Nan. Thank you.
You had talked about Section Eight takes about an eight to ten year wait. I know that's on the, the public side. But as a landlord, how readily available are those Section Eight vouchers for a landlord to take to offer more Section Eight housing?
From a project base, well, there's only, I think, three, two or three properties in Lake County through Lake County Housing that have.
But those are, you're talking about community type, like apartments. We have, we have landlords all over Lake County.
Yeah, I'm talking landlords. How, are there any more, you know what I'm saying? Are there, I don't know, I don't want to say certificate, if you will, but.
No, there's no more vouchers.
Vouchers, yeah.
Head is not increasing the number of Section Eight vouchers that are available across the country. That's why everyone's having the same issues across the country.
And that's been the case for years.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have a question for the, is with the open, open door, are you providing tents to the, to the homeless clients?
When we have them available, we provide tents. We don't have any currently available. The county had a large surplus of them. They were from, and they provided them for us. And then some of the other churches and nonprofits have given us tents and, and camp gear. But we don't currently have.
And that's where your camps come from because they're getting tents with the program. I believe, Daniel said it best, if you build it, they will come, they came. We deal with them quite a bit in different homeless and they'll come from Mascot, Grodwin. They're not just from Eustis. And that's an issue.
Ash, can you speak to how long this took us to.
But one thing that he did say, he wanted to speak to law enforcement, I think that's a good idea. Other law enforcement area agencies believe we are overnighting in Eustis and they're sending them to us and that's how we're getting so many homeless from other areas that may be providing the meals and such from the different churches. They think that we're having a shelter.
Well, I mean, there, we have had instances where in another community, they've reported that the open door is a shelter and they've come to. But that number is very, very small and, I mean, the data that we have supports that. You know, Mount Dora had someone evicted from a hotel on the four forty-one corridor. And so, the Mount Dora Police Department transported him to the open door. But the hotel was right on the line and Mount Dora does support the open door. I mean, they were there today presenting.
By the way, you do believe that it is an overnight, because I hear it being on the scanner and video and such.
If we try to educate the public, that it is not an overnight shelter. But today, Eustis Police Department transported someone from Advent Health to the open door. They just got out of the hospital today and we were expected to provide some sort of housing accommodation by tonight.
Okay. Well, I mean, how many, how many driver's licenses come back to the address of the open door? And how do you provide them with that as their adage for driver's licenses?
We were allowed to, well, first of all, a homeless individual has to have, in order to apply for benefits, a permanent address. And so, we allowed our clients at the open door to use that as an address to receive mail. And they have to have an address of record to apply for benefits, to apply for jobs. And they have to have a phone number to be able to contact or follow up. So, yeah, there, it's, it's no different than coming to our ministries. You can go through the arrest records for Lake County Sheriff's Office and find coming to our ministry's address repeatedly because that's what you report as their physical address. But like I said earlier, the one that I identified last year that was reported as Eustis homeless, but they had five prior addresses within walking distance of downtown.
And to get the disability payments, you know what the disability is, the maximum they can get for a single? Seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, is it, per month? Yeah, that's all. You can't get an apartment for seven seventy-eight dollars. And having seen many, many camps, hardly any of them use those tents. They make their own. They do, you saw them? We've seen so many makeshift, you know, things. And I've been to places where people try to donate clothing and I've seen frozen stack of clothes, six feet in diameter, three feet high. People are trying to dress it the best way they can, those who are not homeless. Unfortunately, it's not the way to address it. You can't give them all kinds of stuff that really doesn't do it any good, so.
Well, we give homeless tents wherever they're set up, they're dressed nicely. So, it's one of the people's property.
I just don't want you to leave here though, thinking that the majority of the people that are homeless are getting tents from Eustis and that's why they're homeless. That's the only thing we don't want to have happen.
I don't think that that's what I'm trying to say, I'm saying that they are getting tents from the open door and then setting up camps. They're not from this area per se because they're from outside and they hear about the open door and they're coming to this area.
Not for tents, not for tents, yeah.
I mean, first of all, we haven't given tents out since the first.
With the, with the disability check, they just go to Walmart and buy it.
Yeah, it's not tenting, yeah.
We get one tent every few months, maybe donated, they'll buy it. And I mean, they're at Walmart for twenty-three dollars, they'll find a way to get them.
Well, you know what I'll do too, is we planned this meeting for January, is make sure that part of our agenda is to bring in law enforcement and let's have a panel discussion about some of the strategies and techniques that can be used to try to help with business districts. And, and we, we need to make that part of the discussion because I think you've got to have different, there, there's, this is multifaceted, the approach has to be multifaceted. You can't just say, oh, well, let's just wait and get everyone educated. And I appreciate that comment, I think that's really super important. But we can't just say, oh, yeah, we're going to, we're going to, all of a sudden, we're going to be able to solve all of the education problems and we're going to fix all the family issues and we're going to, you know. No, we got to keep working on that while we're working on affordability, while we're working on how do we get more of the funds that we can actually use to get people into affordable housing? How can we get more landlords to step up to provide affordable housing and, and create a path for, for those that want to provide affordable housing, that want to be landlords and help out? So, there's, we've got to look at that whole, the big picture and, and then decide as a community, do we feel that an overnight crisis center could help with some of these, some of these things? But I think that law enforcement is definitely a component of this we've got to, to look at. And do we create zones within downtown districts where you just don't tolerate it?
Absolutely.
And then, if you're not going to tolerate it there, how do you handle those other locations where people then shift to? And if you don't have that overnight shelter, then, you know, it, it may be impossible to create, you know, zones where you don't tolerate it at all.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we'll, we'll do our best for that January discussion to really put as much as we can out there on the table for us all to look at community-wide. And I think this program in December, any of you can make it. We're going to try to get some folks there to hear strategies that are working in other locations.
Okay.
And just, it was really interesting because our PATH outreach team went with BE and in the evening to meet with some people in downtown Leesburg, some of the people that are without homes. And actually, some of them said to our outreach team, just tell us where we can go, that we're not going to bother. So, in essence, they were saying the same thing. Give me a zone where it's safe for me to stay because I don't want to be harassed. I don't want to keep, keep being moved around. So, they're looking for that safe spot, the same as, because, I mean, people that are living on the streets aren't necessarily safe themselves. So, I mean, that's all something that, you know, we need to think about as well that it's not just, you know, us that do have homes that have to worry about safety. They're worried about safety as well.
Thank you. Elena?
I just wanna, I just wanna say, the open door, I have seen positive from it. I've seen better to be able to go in and use the internet via P P two fourteen. I've seen people go and take showers, be able to wash their clothes and get a job. So there is positive coming out of it also.
Thank you, Elena. Awesome.
I'm Sierra. I live downtown here and, I mean, I'm all for helping people that want better and wanna help themselves. I've heard some great stuff here. My concern is, when we're talking about the residents in downtown Eustis here and the people I encounter on a daily basis, the reasons I won't walk my dog after the sun goes down, it's that forty percent that don't want your help down here. I encounter people that are out of their minds on drugs on a daily basis, pounding on my doors at night, you name it, for whatever reasons, crazy stories. I mean, the, the, that's my only concern is, I don't know that that's gonna fix our problem down here. Our boardwalk is still gonna be full all the way down. They're, they're still gonna be coming here because this is where the money is when they run out of money for drugs. Where I don't know what the solution is, I have, I have no answer. That's, that's just my only concern.
Thank you. No, you're fine. Can we include, can we include state and national legislators also in that conference in January?
We can certainly invite, we can invite them.
Yeah, they need to hear it too.
You guys talked about the, the waiting list for Section Eight. I know someone that, that used to work for Section Eight. And unless something recently changed, the.
There you go.
The, the waiting list for Section Eight has been closed indefinitely for years. So that's, I mean, that's, that's a huge issue, you know, obviously, of getting housing. You know, another thing is, is how you guys were just talking about, you know, they're looking for a safe space. You know, I think most property owners wouldn't have an issue of them, you know, a lot of them are camping out in the woods now, you know? The problem is, is they trash it. There's trash everywhere, you know? If, it, I don't think property owners would have an issue of you living in their wooded area, but you're trashing it, you're destroying it. The construction that started over by the hospital has forged, it, it has pushed people out. And my kids go to daycare, maybe a few blocks away from the fire department and I've noticed there's people living in the woods out there now. You know, that's new. They're, they're, you can see where the, the trees are, are cleared out and they've got their paths. There's a car, there's, there's a couch on the corner, you know? That, that was never there. We have, you know, we have our shop on Bay Street and we're further out from the core, okay? And we see them on a daily basis. They stop in, they come into my office asking for money or asking for a cigarette or, you know, air for their bike tires. You know, we're, we're, you know, it, it, yes, it's all about helping people, but we do need to find a way to get them away from the core where we're trying to build and grow and bring people, you know, through our gateway, you know, the whole panhandling. What's, what's gonna happen with that, you know? They're, they're all over David Walker and 441. You can't even go to the bank without running into one, you know, panhandling. And, and there's some people that need and there's some people that don't. Some people do this for, as a living. They have a place to live, they have a car and they're out there panhandling, you know? You, you can't even feel safe or feel right giving someone money because you really don't know if they really need it or not, you know? And it's not inviting. People that are driving through Eustis on 441, going to Taveri's or Leesburg, that's not inviting. Who would wanna stop into Eustis when basically almost on every light, there's someone panhandling? That's gonna scare you away, you know? Just like how, how Orlando and all this stuff, they've, you know, gotten that all under control. I think we need to figure out a way to get the panhandling under control so it's not enabling them, you know? I think there's too much enabling. It's one thing to help them and help them, you know, grow and, 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 you know, get education and get a good job and get housing, but not enable them.
Thank you, Carla. Anyone else before we bring it back?
I've heard a lot of things here tonight in Eustis that concern me and I've obviously seen it when we do clean up, you know, we get needles every single time. About half of this room has been out to clean up and has seen the needles and you've, you just walk in Farron Park and you can find them. And it's awful. Leslie, I don't remember the name of it, what did you call it? The Off Limits Core Downtown No, what, what was that? I've never heard of that before.
Well, it's kinda something I made up.
You own it.
I mean, it's a concept of where you would really actively enforce your ordinances. You would have to have ordinances in place, you know, that would be very specific about what you can and can't do in public spaces. And then with the cooperation of your businesses so that if somebody's, you know, on their property, that they would immediately, you know, contact law enforcement and have them be trespassed so that it becomes known in the community, you can't, you can't hang out, you can't sleep, you can't stay in these places because law enforcement will be there and, and actively enforcing ordinances. So it's just, it's, it's a concept, you know? But I, I think it's definitely worth exploring at least. I think so for downtown districts where you're really trying to, I, I just feel like, you know, there's so much inertia that if, if you just upset the apple cart a little bit, that you may then force people to actually, as long as the services are there for them to, you know, to, to access. So if you sort of turn the world upside down, and they do this, law enforcement does this frequently where they're camping on somebody's private property. And so they give them notice, they don't leave. They come back, they're trespassed, they take them to jail. And then you'll, you know, they'll, they'll be off that property and now they'll look for the next one. But it is a way to, to disrupt the status quo and it is, you know? So you do it on private property, why can't you do it? Why can't you set up a zone at downtown district and say, we're not gonna tolerate it?
That zone, if that zone is worked in other cities, it's gotta be combined with the other services in the form, if you want about the other. So if you both, that's a good first start.
But as long as you're enabling, you know, you're bringing people into the area, it, it seems like you're kinda saying, hey, come here, we have these services. But then if you stick around here.
You walk across this side of the street, you walk one block this way and you're in the zone. The, the two things you said, those things work in conjunction, that's, that's the first and first step from everything else. You can't do a lot here.
Well, I know the city is currently, you know, obviously, we just raised the litter. The litter ordinance, we raised the, the fine for littering, but they've also closed off the boardwalk and they've made it, they, so now we can trespass people wearing the park. So now we've got a curfew in our park. And I think a lot of these ordinances might be helpful at least short-term. And maybe some of the other ideas are also very good short-term ideas to, definitely worth exploring. There has to be something long-term too. But all of those ordinances impact a lot of the residents as well and it doesn't sound like the things that we have passed recently are making, I mean, and most of, the business side, Randy's here, Tilly's here, you know? Is it making a difference that you're, are you guys seeing any difference in the past like month or two since the park's been closed, the boardwalk's been closed, the litter? It's gotten worse? Is that because it's cold outside?
I came here for a different, I guess, a different meaning. I, you know, I came to.
Came to be a part of, like I said, I just, you know, I didn't know. I mean, county's here, Salvation, everybody's here, it's awesome. But again, it's, it's something, private housekeeping that we need to take up with our commission, what's going on downtown. Everybody knows what's going on downtown. Just need to fix it. Just do something. Let's just, you know, cause I can stand up and, Randy can stand up, George can stand up, Daniel can stand up, Mr. Warren can stand up. Everybody that owns a business here can stand up. Cause I, I, he is, his voice is so deep, it scares me. But it, it's just a point of, you know, millions of dollars of investments sitting in front of me, millions of dollars of investments are sitting in front of me, three restaurants downtown. And it's just, every day, I'm cleaning pee off my walls. They're taking a shower in the fountain, they're in my bathrooms falling asleep. You know, and it's just a point of, you know, I, I don't wanna bring this out because like I said, it's my hometown, I love it. I moved here to open up businesses. And it's just getting old, putting hundreds of thousands of dollars into buildings and having people, I walk up in the morning, they're sleeping there. You know, wanna build a homeless shelter downtown Eustis? I mean, is that what I'm hearing, basically?
No, that's not actually what we're talking about.
You know, or moving, moving, low county, you know, let's move it next to the courthouse. You got all that beautiful land right on the water. Let them live there.
And we probably should have been clear about that, but the, the location is outside of the city limits of Leesburg. It's near the Sumter County, Lake County line essentially. It's, it's just outside of Leesburg.
I mean, I would, I would say the, the location is still up for a conversation. I mean, we, we identified a.
Like you said, I'm not, like, I don't wanna air align. We all know what our city uses, we have to do to make it a better place. We all just need to work together and get it done. But just shuffling them from left to right, to right to left, doesn't do anything. Like I said, my average age at night is sixty-five, seventy-year-olds old. And they get, I don't wanna say accosted, but the time you get the cops there called, they're gone. And people don't wanna come to my restaurant when it's dark out. Now it's, gets dark at five-thirty. You know, well, we have to walk, they come in, say, can you walk us to our car? You know, we're all trying. Commission's trying, Police Department's trying, but it's, you know, Mount Dora drops them off here. I mean, I'll say it out loud, I mean, I heard it from the Police Department. They drive them, drop them off in the building by Wendy's. And then they come here. I don't hear Mount Dora having a problem with homeless. Anybody hear about it? I missed what you said, they're dropping them off at Wendy's? Yeah, they take, they're, and they tell them they come back, they come back to the bridge and they're gonna put them in jail. And this came from Mount Dora Police Department. And like I said, I've been around Lake County a long time. Like I said, I own Crazy Wings, Desperados, you know, I've been here a long time, seen a lot of change and I came back because I love Lake County. But like I said, shuffling them back and forth is just not handling. You guys all do your great job up there and I appreciate it, but this is, you know, again, I know I'm talking too much, there's only three minutes, but it's just a point is, we're all trying, we're not pointing fingers.
I'm not gonna try to take that away from you.
We're all, nobody wants to point, nobody wants to point fingers, but it's just, you know, again, you walk up and alls you do is clean up dope bags, needles, you know? And, and they sleep right there and you ask them to leave and they get mad at you. A gentleman came into my bar the other night, last Wednesday, came into use the restroom. I came up and said, please don't come in again. Five minutes later, he was in the street. Ambulance was there, fire agent was there, Police Department was there, right in front of my restaurant. Who's gonna come in my restaurant with somebody spazzing on the street? You know, and it's, it's, what are you gonna do? I mean, what are you supposed to do?
I think Leslie gave a fantastic recommendation out of everybody's.
Microphone, George.
I think Leslie gave a great, great first step that we should seriously consider.
What is it?
For our idea of making a.
Like a zone?
A zone.
I think I called it the non-tolerance zone or something like.
Yeah, that'll work. Chief Calhoun, Chief Calhoun.
Um, the, the problem that we have is that ninety percent of what they're doing is not illegal.
Yeah.
Panhandling is not illegal. It's very, very protected right now. We're, people are getting, agencies getting sued all over the country for trying to enforce ordinances against panhandling. You know, unfortunately, sleeping on a park bench is not illegal. That's the problems that we're running into. I mean, we try to kinda convince people that they need to move on, but to have a, to have a no-tolerance zone, aren't, you know, Eustis is our no-tolerance zone. You know, we do what we can, but the problem is that, that pexy, pesky constitution keeps getting in the way. Because if you got a, a mother sitting there on the park bench with her kid for three hours, you're not gonna run her off, but a homeless person that doesn't look good, we're gonna run them off. And I tell you, I, I love the concept of what the open door is trying to do, to provide those services, to help people get that hand up. But I tell you, just about every homeless person that my guys come in contact with say the reason that they're here is because of the open door. That's, that's what they tell us. That's what they're saying. And, and again, I love what they're doing, but I think Evan hit it there, and I always call you by your last name, but I can't pronounce it.
Can't pronounce it.
But having those services and, and things available for them are, are great, but having it downtown is not the place to do it. We don't track specifically calls involving homeless people. We're actually looking at trying to come up with a way that we can do that because it could be, come out as a vagrancy issue, it could come out as a suspicious person, there's all kinds of different labels it can get. But we're, we are working on getting our computer system lined up to where we can track that, that whatever that call is, that if it's a homeless concept to it, that we're gonna be able to track that just for, you know, for our identification to see what that is. But those are kind of the issues that we're facing with it.
Chief, could you work with BE and maybe Chief Broadway down in Clearmont and check that program out that they've got going on and see if we can work out something like that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. I took a note to do that.
All right, thank you, sir.
So a no-tolerance zone is not enforceable?
Pete, I'm sorry I had to leave the room.
No, that's okay, no.
But it depends on what ordinances you have in place and whether somebody's vibrating an order.
But you can't, you can't craft the witnesses against panhandling.
No, no, you can't.
Aggressive panhandling.
Passive panhandling, we can't legislate. If they're just sitting there with a sign, we can't do it. Person is approaching an individual consistently, that's aggressive panhandling. That we can address.
Call the police and have them trespass.
If they walk up to you and say, and I have a dollar, and they say no, and they walk away, there is no law that's against that, they stand up.
But sleeping next to somebody's dumpster or on their property or.
On their property, yeah. He can trespass.
And then sleeping in the park.
That's public property.
The chief indicated, the problem is, somebody's sleeping on a park bench, how do you differentiate that from a mother sitting there with her child?
But after dark, I mean, when the park is closed.
We have a curfew on the park, yes.
If we just announced recently, now we have hours on the park and we can do that after the hour, but that doesn't help, you know?
During the day.
During the day, any other time.
But Tilly just said it got worse since you imposed a curfew. Did I not hear that?
I don't know if he correlated those two.
He did say it's been worse lately.
I think he indicated that the overall homeless issue has gotten worse.
Yeah, that's what it is because we're, we're open late at night and they gravitate to work with that. And, you know, and if anybody who's here knows, I'm the nicest, hardest heart cat there is, I do everything I can to help them, but just, like you said, just the aggressiveness that just sets everybody off. These are older people leaving all downtown, it's just not me. And, you know, they follow, we got the bicycles and follow to the edge. And that's all, it's just, it's just, in time you call before you say, I don't, we're gone. You know, there's nothing you can do. That's, that's a sad one, you know? We just, we're, we're in a box where the bubble, you know, from Peters to J and J to, um, Wells Fargo to Seabiscuit.
Chamber of Commerce.
Or in a Chamber of Commerce.
They sleep on our paddocks, they leave.
You go by Bellbury tonight, you'll see.
We call the lady and ask her to remove, if you need to get your stuff off our porch. Oh, I have the phone on wall, but she doesn't care that it's there. I mean, she's not.
You don't have Bellbury.
While it's not high enough to cover up our no trespassing sign.
They shake the door. I'll call the police because I don't wanna get nailed with twenty-five bucks. You know, and come by.
Oh, you mean on the alarms? Yeah.
Do we have an expert that we can bring on?
With, with all this being said, and, and it's really sad that a, a wonderful program like the open door has turned into this.
Yes.
So let's, no one's gonna say it, BE, so they've talked about, I guess, the, the elephants in the room. So where do you suggest that we move the open door? I mean, you know, because when you want the no-tolerance zone, so you have it here, so then let's just say, BE says, okay, well, we found a place at the old bank first. So then now we're gonna have the surrounding areas there going, well, we don't want them here either. We don't want the open, you know, you know what I'm saying? So no one's gonna say anything to you, but I'm your friend, I will. So they, they wanna know, where can we move it?
We own the building.
We own the building.
I know, I know.
And we put a lot of money into revitalizing that.
Beautiful job.
Doesn't mean that the building doesn't have other purposes.
Sure.
But at the end of the day, it's, you're going to run into NIMBY issues everywhere.
I know.
We have millions of dollars wrapped up on our real estate.
No, I get it though, completely.
I was homeless, I lost everything I had in two briefs, and I lived in my car. So I get, so I know where it broke from the bottom of this to the top of this. I get it, I understand. I have to worry about paying my bills because my, my, my customers won't come to my restaurant? Because of riding the lights and the abundance of people and scaring, following down the alley? It's not your problem, it's not, it's a community problem that we got to stop it, but the point is.
It's, it's my problem in that I'm part of this community, absolutely.
It has to be down to this score.
So.
Why plus a close at ten o'clock because I have people harassing my customers?
Any ideas?
No, I mean, that's not a conversation that.
Well, that's why I, I have to address that.
No, not at all, but they never did, and bring it up.
But at the end of the day, I mean, how do other communities address it? This, I can promise you that this isn't the first community.
No kidding.
That's right.
No kidding.
That's right.
It's right, so true. All around the country.
When redevelopment's in downtown, they don't, they, if services are all necessity, they're not providing for downtown.
Sure.
That's the law. They'll be saying, they're all.
Those are the big cities.
My backyard, but you can't choke off the central core business district for those services. That's, that's what it comes down to. They have to be, they can't be in the core.
But at the end of the day, how many of them, and, and I don't know the answer to this, so I just simply don't. And that's a conversation I think that I'd like to continue with Chief Calhoun, is how many of them that are sleeping in doorways and panhandling to customers are actually clients of the open door? Just because they're homeless in downtown doesn't mean they're a client.
They don't go.
It's a combination.
Hold on, everybody.
It's a combination, or it's a combination of areas that earlier, the churches are here, churches are providing, three churches within fifty yards, you provide food three times a week. So it's not just one, but it's that whole execution of it. They're all right there.
Because, I mean, I can give you an example from my own personal experience. I had someone that's paying forty-five dollars a night to stay at the Colonial Inn come pound on my door in five o'clock in the afternoon begging for money. And my wife was still alive at the time and gave them money. And so at two-thirty in the morning, when they needed twenty more dollars, they came to our house and banged on the door and woke us up in the middle of the night, and we called the Police Department. And I had them trespass from my property. So I would ask you, what kind of money would you, see, we all agree that what the open door does is an awesome service. Absolutely. What we, what I'd like to ask is, what would you need to relocate? Daniel, I can't answer that question for you. I mean, I'm not saying that we can't continue to have that conversation, but I can't answer that for you. No, obviously, but that's something, I think there are a number of us who would really be interested in that.
Well, we can certainly start that discussion. And like you said, I'm having a hard time with this because I, I'm in my heart mode. I didn't, and I feel like I'm going to get my city, feel like I'm going to get business owners, I feel like I can help, but if it comes to a point where it's just, you know, every day, it's just, yeah, it's not, not nearly sometimes. It's just something you got to do, because why can't we just drop them off here? And, you know, I mean, and you guys can't do nothing about it, we can't do nothing about it, but, you know, it's, 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 it's getting old. It's getting tired, you can bring showers, you can do that.
Yeah, and again, I mean, I don't, I can't qualify how many, quantify how many.
Maybe none of them.
Yeah.
That's why I said, I think I'm in the wrong meeting. I feel happy because I wasn't, you know, this, I thought it was just something we were going to talk about.
I mean, I'm not saying that some of them aren't being dropped off, but I can tell you, based on the, just the, the little bit of information that I've researched, and I just started recently, going through the arrest and looking to see how many of them are coded homeless on the Sheriff's Office website. And you see that they've had a presence in Eustis for at least the last seventeen years, they're not someone that's been dropped off here. But they're, I, I can assure you that there are too. I just can't qualify that, quantify that.
Yeah, it's a one, it's a very, every day, how many homeless people are getting out of jail? There's zero problem.
Uh, you, I don't know.
Not zero, not zero. I saw someone today actually right in front of the library, underneath the overhang with their shopping carts.
But it was unusual to see that though.
Yeah, it's not that often that you see that.
I've never, I've never heard of it, I've never seen any.
Yeah.
In downtown, being a park place, a one restaurant, a cross street, what else? Never seen that.
I mean, Judge Neal, you know, has talked about how. She sees it as a problem. You can't really find a day that a homeless person don't have anywhere to go. And she perhaps wanted a facility and paid it in. But I can't tell you what the problem is because it varies because I'm between, I'm in Leesburg or Eustis.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to say what would tell that.
Sure.
I've, I've employed them, I've emailed, I give. Which is a fact, it would probably enable.
Well, and I've told you, I mean, I see that in Leesburg. You've got downtown merchants that, business owners that will complain, but they also pay them to tear down their boxes, or they bake them cookies for the holidays. So it's, it, it happens. Or they're on a first-name basis with one or two homeless individuals, but, and so they're okay, but they want the rest of them to, to go away.
But that one will tell one, and those are one, that's a point right now.
Yeah.
But it'd also be something that will just automatically, not necessarily partially open door, but that, think about this, the homeless people would not go out on the county line because they won't have access to the things that they want to. So it seems like a natural attraction to be where the action is, where things are. And that, that might be attracting them also in addition to whatever services that they can get. And I was thinking that if one point two million dollars, we're talking about a fifty-bed facility, could we not think in terms of one point five million dollars to do a comprehensive service? Coordinate programs and organizations and businesses and use that funding to help more people, to do more intensive services? It's something that I was thinking about that we might also want to consider. I'm not saying don't do that, but I think that if we, even if we provided, if they did move open door, you're still going to get them coming back because this is where the core, the heartbeat is, and they want whatever's around here and the services and exposure to whatever's there. So I think that that's going to be an issue too. It's not necessarily going to resolve the problem because you moved open, open door, but they're not going to be happy going down forty-four and having to walk back to, to get whatever it is that they need. There's nothing out there, so, and I think when we talk about building a facility, everybody's going to say, not in my backyard. You know, who, does Eustis want it? No, we don't want it, this, where are we going to put them? You know, I mean, it's a lot of things that we've got to consider and talk about too.
And, and one of the things when you start talking about building affordable housing is affordable housing units are required to be within close proximity to medical services, to shopping, to public facilities, all of those sort of things. So you can't just take it and stick it out in the middle of nowhere, or you're not going to get federal dollars to support it. So, you know, those are things that you're going to have to look at in the future as well.
I have one observation too. The open door was instituted because there was no fallout place or anything at the time. And so the original concept at that time worked. Their intent worked at that time. Society has changed. If the services are there, and I, I've been in there multiple times, the, the clients have access to the computers. I've seen people applying for jobs, that's great. Some of them get jobs, and they're still homeless because we don't have the housing inventory. So, you know, having the, the, the facilities is great, but if you don't have the inventory, what are they going to do? They're still going to be homeless. They may have a job and be homeless, but where are we at at that point? So the housing inventory is just not there. And I know people that make very good money that cannot afford to even run a house. So most of them are sharing the rent on a home, even with a good income. So I, I think we have to look at the housing issue too. And if it has to go back to community and it has to go back to, let's say, industry-based, business-based. And I know some people are going to freak out about it, but I just went on the home tour, the farm tour. And most of our people in agriculture are bringing in their employees through the HB one, two, three visa programs, bringing them in. They have regular crews in Yumitilla. The one owner said that he has a regular crew that he brings in. And again, it's seasonal, it's seasonal. But they, they are provided housing. He provides the housing for them. And they have the transportation, then they're not around here. The housing is in Clermont. They provide transportation, they get them to the job. All legal, legal immigrants to be able to work here. So I'm kind of seeing a, a shift where maybe business could be more involved in that end. And, and I remember the days of agriculture and the, the little houses up in Yumitilla where not long ago, people lived there and worked in the groves. So I kind of see us moving back towards that because an affordable, a living wage is, is very hard to come by. And even those that can come by it do not have five thousand dollars to move into an apartment or a house. And you know that, that's the big complaint too. So I, I, I think the initial discussion for us, as, as for our city, we've been looking at, at the issue. And the open door does provide those services and things, but I think in a different area would be beneficial to our sustainability of our downtown. And again, it's because society has changed. It's not because, it's not because we're not caring, it's just we're at that point. So, so for sustainability, viability for the city, we have to consider those things. And I have a friend that has a million-dollar construction company, can't go and bid on things because he does not have the employees. And paying thirty dollars an hour for a block mason. You can afford something on thirty dollars an hour, but it's just getting over that, that hump and getting into transition to be able to do that. So again, if there's employment out there, and there is, again, the housing has to, has to come. So you, you kind of have to think outside of the box, and maybe it's kind of a retro feel, but I kind of feel like, you know, if I had a business and I needed employees, like some of them are already doing, they, they buy homes and they rent their homes or, or they provide them. If they're doing it through the federal government, they have restrictions, they have to provide the housing. So, you know, there's some options out there. Just threw that out there and let people think about it.
We've been at this a little over two hours. I'm going to go ahead and close this tonight. I told you we would not have any straight answers tonight. This was just a dialogue to get us started. For our business owners that are in the room, thank you for what you do, thank you for making Eustis what it is. If things are going on on your property, trespass the people, give the Police Department some teeth to be able to do something. I, I have a heart, I want to be careful with people, but the only way we're going to clean some of that up is to start being a little more proactive by trespassing individuals that you're having trouble with. I noticed after our Police Department, along with our Sheriff's Department, did some sweeps through our parks for a day or two, it, things, things quietened down a little bit. If we can increase our presence of our uniformed officers, Sheriff's Department in our parks, in certain areas of our community, that will help us as well. Because I think it was mentioned earlier in the evening, that a lot of these homeless people, if they see law enforcement, they tend to move away from them. So if we can increase some of that, which brings us to another challenge that we have, is not having enough law enforcement officers in, in our department and in the Sheriff's Department. I know the Sheriff's Department's really getting up on its numbers now, but we still have that challenge here in town. So we've got a lot of work to do. I'm going to ask Mary to put at least a little bit on the agenda for December nineteenth. I, we want to keep our meeting kind of short because of Christmas, but just so we can talk back as a commission a little more that night about what we've heard tonight. And then maybe give staff some further direction. That'll give us a little bit of time to think about what we've heard and a direction that we might need to, to head. BE, if you would work with Ron and, and talk with him a little bit about the open door, if there are any, any possibilities of way we could go down a road with maybe trying to find another facility? And the city be a part of that, or whatever you all can come up with? I think that was one of the, the universal things we were starting to hear is that the open door being in our city core is a problem. Not saying we're going to need to pull the rev cord yet, but we need to, we need to have options in front of us. The open door has done a great job, and matter of fact, I think that's what we're seeing, is it's done a really great job. It's really providing services to people. And I know the hearts of the ladies that started that organization, Anne Rao, I know Anne Left, Mrs. Shamrock, Karen, all of you, I know the hearts that you have for people. So, and we want to continue that, we don't want to rip that apart, but we do have to look at the twenty-one thousand other people that call Eustis home as well. And if we're going to go back in front of the voters and ask for the money that we're going to ask for, for a new community center, convention center, we've got to clean our backyard before we can ask the voters for that type of money. I want to thank each one of you for sharing with us tonight and give us your insights. It's been very valuable to me. I want to thank the community for showing up. It shows that there is a, a concern out there and that you have the heart to help us address it. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and we're going to adjourn our meeting.